I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. As this is a special school committee meeting with just one item agenda, we will not be having any oral communications this evening. So that being said, Maria, could we have a roll call for attendance?
Ms. Weason. Kathy Clancy. Kathy has not made it yet. Joel Favaza.
Here.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
And Ms. Watson.
Here.
And Kathy still isn't here. We'll mark a present when she shows. Tonight, we are going to be discussing the fall season of athletics. And there's a lot of issues around that. Health and safety, costs, et cetera. But I want to start by just saying how, I said this last night, but I'm going to say it again, how thankful we, the school committee, I believe, all are to the staff, the teachers, the administration, the DPW, the bus drivers. Everybody has been pulling so hard. And today, we got our kids back in school. It's a very, very good thing. I hope it lasts for a while. But the fact that we've done it this much is really, really a great achievement. And we owe a great deal of thanks to Superintendent Lummis and his entire staff, and all of the teachers, and all of the city employees that have been involved in this, the health department, just everybody. It's been all hands on deck, and we're very thankful. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ben for our, to move forward with our discussion on athletics.
Ben, you're muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Pope. I'm going to take a moment to do just what you did, which is to thank a number of people. I was able to get to all of our schools except for the high school today. Sorry, James, I'll be there tomorrow. And I just saw some amazing things. You know, a lot of smiles, a lot of families walking hand in hand to school, you know, drop offs and pickups, some going smoother than others, pencil sharpening, waves, hugs, smiles. I heard some things, too. A new phrase, a new sort of catchphrase at East Gloucester, which is "purell in, purell out." So as you leave a class, as you go into a classroom, as you leave a classroom, they also have the zombie walk, which is this, which is walking with your hands out front to keep distant while you're walking down the halls. I heard singing. I heard "so happy to be here" a lot. And I heard "so happy to be back" from teachers with big smiles on their faces. I heard teachers saying "good job" to kids as they walk through the halls or as they learn something new. And there's a short video we put up on our Facebook page, and I think it's also on the school committee Facebook page, which is great to look at, but we've seen there's a lot of sharing out there. And I saw Ms. Weason today at Beeman while I was there, and she said, you know, this really feels emotional. And boy, are you right about that. It was emotional for our families, for our kids, for myself, for our teachers. It's been, excuse me. It's been so much work for all of our staff, and our teachers, and our people. And from the moment this summer started, we wanted to get our kids back in school. And, you know, it's a tough choice. It's been the right choice. It has taken tremendous persistence and perseverance from our teachers, from our staff, from our leaders. And today, it is the right choice for Gloucester, and I couldn't be happier. Sorry, but thank you all so much. Thank you very much, everybody. The whole city did this. The whole city came together for our kids to get them where they need to be, which is in our schools. So thanks. Let me take a minute.
If I just hop on that last slide and just mention, the funniest part is, you wouldn't even know, when you got to the drop off, what has been going on in the background, because everyone was kind of locked, you know, in gear, ready to go, smile on the face, teachers receiving their students, you know, again, certainly none of the students and any of the parents who hadn't been watching our meetings would have any indication about the difficult, you know, slow progress we had to make over the last six weeks or so. And so it's excellent that not only we pulled it off, but, you know, everyone came to game day ready to play and didn't let anything that's been kind of going on in the background or behind the scenes impact the arrival of students today. You never would have known that we've been having four or five hour meetings, arguments, revision after revision after revision of some minutia on some point. You know, today, it was just like, everyone was dialed in. That was awesome.
That's because we have great teachers and principals. I don't expect anything less.
Absolutely. I second that. Thank you, GBA.
100%. 100%. And there were bumps. There are always bumps in the first day, and we'll keep working on those, you know? And we know what they are, but that happens in the first day. So lots to be worked out still, and we'll do it day by day like we have been all along. So, but it's been a great, great day for everyone. So on to tonight. So we're going to help the discussion in the committee by talking about health and safety. So Karen Carroll is with us once again. We'll start with that. And then Brian has updates about what NEC is doing, some information from teachers, from surveying teachers that you asked for, and also, we can talk about the budget as well, and transportation, of course. And so we'll give you a quick update. But first, we'd like always to begin with, not always to begin, because Karen doesn't need to be here every night. But Karen, if you could help the committee understand, just from your perspective, from a public health perspective, you know, the risks associated to, especially with athletics, the benefits, and sort of where, how you look at this in terms of whether or not we should have inters班级 support, sports this fall? If you could actually first give us an update on community transmission, because I do want to start there, and then, which is all related, obviously.
Right. Yes. It is all related. So thanks, everybody, for a few more minutes of your time, and thanks for all of your hard work. You are incredible school committee who stayed with it all these weeks and just so determined to work through all the details that needed to happen. So it's a pleasure to be working with you guys, and however we can help, we're committed to that as well. So sports, to move on to that, but let's start with our community, what's happening in our community. We're still doing great. We're really in a, just a really nice, quiet period. We still have a few cases. We have a very low incidence rate, so new cases each day, maybe one every couple of days right now. We are under five active cases as of today, which is remarkable. I'm really thrilled with that. And, you know, we just hope it continues. We're partially on an island. We've partially made such a citywide commitment to this, and who knows what else. Community transmission is low throughout the state right now. So, you know, that's not unique, but there are some pockets of activity, and we are not one of them right now, which is great. So we ride that wave, and we do the things that we can do right now while continuing to do all of these things that we know prevent spread. Our wastewater treatment report is now available. We put the graph up again. I think I mentioned last time, there is only one data point. So if you only see one graph, that's all there is. There are some other information they send us that compares us to the rest of the country and things like that. I don't think it's particularly helpful, but if people are interested, you can let me know. So the mayor's office will post that every week as part of the report that they post, kind of giving a, just a picture of where we're at in our community, the number of active cases, and the wastewater detection level, which is floating right around that 3,600 is the level of detection. So we've had like two weeks below detection and two weeks above, and we kind of, it's not any pattern. We're just kind of bouncing right around it. So again, very low transmission we're seeing on that community-wide level, and that gives us the picture of the asymptomatic individuals as well. So from the active cases and the test numbers and the positive test rate, all we can know there is the people who are symptomatic and went to be tested. The wastewater gives us the picture of you and I and every other visitor coming through the city. So those are all really good numbers. I just had a look at the statewide numbers, and they, like I said, are very good. The positive test rates, so the percentage of tests coming back positive are still well below 1%. We're staying at about 0.8%. Our hospitals have plenty of capacity. The nursing homes, the two long-term care facilities here in Gloucester were in compliance with the state's new requirements last week for testing all employees and all patients regularly. So we're in full compliance with our long-term care facilities, and we have no clusters or spikes in activity anywhere in the city. So all good news at this point. So having said that, the Department of Ed, DESI, and the Department of Public Health, as well as the local health department, would support any and all of these organized activities with the guidance provided by the state. So, you know, as long as the guidance is followed, the safety precautions are followed, then things like sports and pro-social activities for kids, school, are all good to do. And we would say, go ahead with the guidance from the state, and if you can find a way to do it in your district, these things are all good for kids. We also know that exercise, in particular, the arts as well, music, have health benefits as well. So, you know, anything we can do to boost our kids' immune system, exercise being right up there with a proven strategy or effective way to boost immune systems, that's all good right now. So having said all that, like we've said with school opening, we don't know what next week we'll bring. We don't know what information and studies will come along from schools that have been open now or tried to play sports, these sorts of things. We are constantly learning. The guidelines will probably constantly change, and we have to kind of pivot with that as information comes through from the state, and also as the transmission levels change, both here on Cape Ann as well as further afield, if our sports teams are traveling further afield or playing further afield. What I can say about that is that there are so many ways in which this is being watched really closely, not, you know, all of these numbers. We have less than five active cases. So we are watching them. We have a team of 10 nurses who, you know, that's all they have to do is watch these three cases right now. Now, we won't have that luxury down the track, but I just want to reassure you the best we can, that once a case comes through, whether it's in another community, those public health nurses are tracing their cases. And if we get a case under 20, the first thing we're saying to that young person is, who do you hang out with? What do you do? Do you, where do you work? Do you work? Do you ride public transportation? Are you on a team? You know? And our nurses and the public health nurses reassure those young people or the adults we're working with that this is safe and no one's going to get penalized. We just want to let people know and keep everyone safe. So I feel like when transmission starts, which it may, that there will be a lot of eyes watching cases and sussing it out. And the other schools are held to the same standard we are. And that's, I think, the other thing you need to remember, that every school that chooses to run sports has to sign an attestation that they've complied with the checklist, similar to every other industry. They need to physically sign off on that. And then before every practice, and Brian is going to talk about these details more, but they also have to do the self-screening, like many other industries, that no one on the team is symptomatic that day, that no coach is. And they'll get used to this, and we'll all get used to it. And hopefully, you know, people will take those things seriously and not attend a practice or a game if they have symptoms, and that's where the education comes in. And so those coaches are, you know, going to be watching, and they're signing off on that as well. So I feel like there are a number of ways in which we are monitoring those things closely. Other schools are required to inform their local MIAA league if they have a health metric of concern. Now, this is a little bit of a moving feast right now. The only metric being used widely by schools is this red category on the incidence chart that comes out each Wednesday. And as I've said before, this is only one measure. It doesn't show you prevalence. It doesn't show you really in a community-wide level what's happening. It only shows you new cases averages over 14 days. And I can tell you that in talking to other health directors, there are towns that pop into yellow or red because of maybe an outbreak in a nursing home or a work facility, a small cluster, a wedding. You know, these things happen, and that's how we tend to see community transmission or cases spike, is in small clusters of people that all went to the same thing or did the same thing. So one activity like that in your community can bounce you into this red category of incidents, which does not necessarily mean you have community-wide transmission. So I did speak with someone at DESI tonight, and they were really helpful. And what they encouraged is that if there are cases or concerns, that local school departments work with boards of health and the state to kind of make a decision looking at the full picture. Her words were, "I wouldn't jump. If you go to red, I wouldn't jump to cancel your sports until you're sure this is a real trend in your community." Because there are towns that are flipping in and out, and you just want to, once you're out too, as Brian will tell you, I think you're out. You know, once you pull your teams, you're done until the next season. So just a word there to clarify, I think that there's a lot of emphasis put on that one map, and I think a lot of athletic directors in area schools feel that if your town goes to red, you're done. According to DESI, that's not necessarily true. It's more sits locally with the MIAA league that you belong to and your own school committee. So again, I would just encourage you to work with us and to work with the state if you do see blips in area towns, to find out what the real picture is. And I think the only other thing I just wanted to highlight, I pulled the data for the state, and at this point, the highest category of new cases per 100,000, the highest rate is seen between the 20 and 29-year-olds. I imagine that this is because we're testing all of them in colleges right now, and so many of them would probably be asymptomatic. The 0 to 19 is one of the lowest. It's kind of a bell curve. And again, this is all available on mass.gov. And the rates of death for 0 to 19-year-olds is still at zero for Massachusetts in the past two weeks. And up until the age of 40, we really don't have any, very, very few hospitalizations or deaths. So again, this is a disease that predominantly affects older people in a serious way. So even though we are seeing, you know, the numbers of college-age students who have the virus or who have been listed as cases, confirmed cases, we're not seeing that result in significant health problems or hospitalization. So I think that that gives you a little bit of a picture about this profile we're talking about, this population we're talking about. And I think that's really the main thing I wanted to say. Actually, just one other thing about Maven Trace, I always have more to say, about cases, and I may have said this, so forgive me if I'm repeating, but our public health nurses talk a lot. They did before COVID, and they talk even more now. They are a group of colleagues here on the North Shore, and they're all doing the same work day in and day out. And if they have a concern, or they've heard something about something that might be going on in one of the other towns, they are reaching out to us, and we are, you know, sharing that information. So I don't want you to feel like if you're engaged in activities outside the walls of Gloucester, we won't have some of these same security nets that we have within Gloucester. Any other things you wanted me to cover?
Well, we have a couple of questions, I think. Melissa?
Very quickly. Karen, thank you for being here. Thank you for the information. I mean, talking to you is just vital during this time, and I appreciate you taking the time. So I'm looking at the mass.gov website right now, and it says we have, there was the information that was released today, it says we have six cases, but you're saying we have under five, and I thought I heard you say three.
So the report you're looking at is pulled on a Wednesday. It's usually pulled on a Wednesday morning.
Yes.
You know, at the moment, they ran it for the number of cases, you know, it can be a little bit different. It's a moving feast. And as people get cleared, as we clear them, they come off.
Okay.
So I can't tell you what that discrepancy is. I just know that we only have three active, less than five, that we're managing at the moment through Maven. And the state has told us that that is going to be your most accurate, is what your public health nurses are managing.
Yeah. I thought I heard this report was a little bit behind in collecting data, so a couple days behind or something.
There are some discrepancies with the data, and then there are some things that we clean up. We know that the person has moved from probable to not, or the person was really a resident of somewhere else, and we're, or they belong in a cluster of another community. So there are things with the data that are tricky, and again, they're just pulling one point in time, whereas we're doing real-time daily. But, you know, even six is a really low number for our community.
Yeah. And then secondly, when we get the update from you, when you tell us, like, there's under five, and I know HIPAA prevents you from giving us information, but can we at least get age groups? You know what I mean? In other words, there's two that are over 60 and one that's in the 40, just to get an understanding of who's getting impacted in our community? I mean, some of us tend to think maybe it's the nursing homes right away, where others might think, wow, what if it's a student, and we don't know about it? You know, I know you can't give us names or anything, but it would be helpful if we could at least know the ages of the people that are infected, I think.
So last spring, we did some reporting. We broke down some of the data when we had large numbers of data, like hundreds. And that we can do, and we have done. Anytime we have less than five of anything, we're really, really careful to make sure it's all de-identified because of HIPAA, exactly what you said. So it's definitely something we can talk more about. The state does a lot of reports, and they do break things down by age in a congregate, and they may even do it by county. But we can certainly, I mean, it's definitely something we could talk about as the numbers go beyond five. Under five, we're really, really careful, especially in smaller communities like around here. We want to de-identify. What I can tell you is that there are no, all summer, there have not been any kind of clusters or groups or trends, or, you know, like, one, all of our cases were in one facility or in one anything. Those are the kinds of things we watch for. As soon as we have more than one case anywhere, it's a cluster. It gets assigned a nurse who goes into that business, that facility, that home, that whatever, and works really closely to make sure that we get a handle on that cluster. The same thing will apply with the schools. Anytime there's more than one, we'll treat it as a cluster. We'll be really working closely with you. And then I think if it's more than three or more than some percent, the state will bring their cavalry in to test as much as you want or whatever. But, yeah. So I will take that, I will take that back and see what we can provide. It's just, you know, we just want to be really careful, and there are so many times that it's really just a rumor, and so we don't want to, yeah.
Right. So I'm not, honestly, I'm not trying to, excuse me, identify anybody, but just get an idea of what's going on, more so to put the rumors to rest. You know, we hear five kids went to a hockey game, and they're all testing positive. But yet, if there's a report that they're 30 and over, then I guess that just shows where that's at. You know, I mean, Gloucester loves rumors. I think we thrive on them and live on them here. So it's more so to put things like that to rest, not to identify anybody. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Samantha has a question.
Thank you. Karen, just to be mindful of your time, will you be here to field questions after Brian does his presentation?
I'm hoping that we could let her go.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because Brian might cover this, Brian might cover this in his presentation, but, you know, I'll go ahead and ask. So it sounds like you are likely aware of things that are happening before the map comes out on Wednesdays, and that's probably true of all other public health departments, right?
Yes. We're aware if our case numbers, if the new cases have gone up during the week, we would certainly know, yes.
And so right now, and Brian, maybe you can clarify this, the MIAA is relying on just that map to determine whether or not it's safe for cities to participate?
Yeah. At this point now, I believe that is the one set line. If you're in the red, you are not allowed to participate at this time. Obviously, that fluctuates, and with seasons having not started yet, there have been towns in the past few weeks that go up or down. But at this point right now, I believe that's the one set standard for the entire state.
And so will games, the game schedule be on your radar, Karen, and on other public health departments' radar, so that if there is something coming up in a city, in a town that we're going to play prior to the game and prior to that map comes out, that we could sort of make a day-by-day decision? Does that make sense?
No. Well, probably not in exactly the way you're saying. However, if there was, you know, a case, and this has happened on our soccer teams in Cape Ann and North Shore, I mean, kids share water bottles, and they, you know, spread viruses. And so this is not new completely to us. It's, you know, not often, but if there was a case, again, of a young person, then the first thing the nurse in that town where that young person lives, they're going to ask them what's going on, what teams are they on, where they might, you know, anything about who they might hang out with, and because that's obviously going to be a high risk if they were hanging out or they go to work somewhere indoors with other people, a lot of other people. So we'll be asking those questions about teens, once a case is confirmed. And so if the public health nurse in Linfield hears that they have a case or a cluster, they'll be working with the state epi, who will say, okay, we need to look back at the dates, we need to look at who might have been exposed. Was this kid on the debate team, and they were up in Gloucester debating or playing field hockey in Malden? Were they highly infectious when they played? So there'd be a whole bunch of things that would go into finding out who the close contacts are. Again, you'd have to, I mean, if you, you'd have to be really close to someone, and in fast-moving sports, it would be hard to get 15 fast-moving sports, it would be hard to get 15 minutes within six feet of another player. I don't know what sport or situation, but I'm sure there are, but I can't think how that would work. So we would be looking for that kind of exposure. And the public health nurses would talk if they need to. I mean, once they figure out who the close contacts were to any positive case, they'll be reaching out to whatever town the close contacts live in. And, and I think I've said before, it can be pretty intense. I mean, there can be, they work somewhere here, they, they took a trip there, sometimes it can cross state borders. So... Did that answer your question, Samantha?
It did. I have, I have some follow-up questions, but I think Brian will probably get into it.
Just real quick, as far as, as far as that goes, one of the topics I'll discuss quickly is scheduling. We met as ADs this past week to talk about that, and try and make it where we play the same cities on the same time. So all of our soccer teams, all of our field hockey teams in a two-day span just play that one city. So if anything was to happen, tracing would be much easier. And that's more for the moderate-risk sports that we, we had that as a top focus when we met yesterday, so.
Thank you, Brian. Jonathan, you're muted.
So, Fafia, may I take?
Yes. I have some questions. Well, first of all, Karen, thank you so much. This is why I wanted to wait and get all the questions, and to reassure not just myself, but for people who are in the audience. It has nothing against Brian, or anyone else, or their skills, but the, one of the points that Samantha was saying, first of all, and Melissa, Melissa, really, you're right, the rumors and everything else are horrible, but if we said, yep, it's one student, oh, then it was this one, you know what? I just let my border health do what they need to do. Most of your nurses in our school system are top tracers. They've been great. We were called traces before they even had traces. Just so you know, that the city of Gloucester was way ahead of the game before they even knew what they were doing. So my nurses, I call them mine now, even though they're pot bends, but I call them mine because it was traces first. And our nurses in the city of Gloucester are just amazing. Brian knows what he's doing, and this is what's really important. It's not that we're going to hear something that day, because if I'm not feeling good, and I have some symptoms today, it's not going to be traced. It's not going to be in Maven. It's not going to be in any of the systems until I test positive. So it's really up to the coaches to say, if you're not feeling good, what are your symptoms? What is this? Sit down, let's figure it out. And then he can call Karen or anything else, or whatever. So they, hopefully, you know, our coaches and, and Brian is going to go, has a training, has a process and everything else, we're very fortunate, and hopefully Brian will answer that, that all of them are going to be doing that. That was my main concern. It's not that when we're going to hear it, it's before. We have to know before. If someone's not feeling good before, we, when we hear it, it's already positive. I, we need to know before. We need to have the coaches trained, we need to have the ADs trained, and saying, this is symptomatic, this is what you should look for. If someone really has ABC, you know what, don't bother coming today, go see, call your primary care immediately. You know, you can't play today, you can't get on the bus, you can't, that's what we need. We need it before. And I'm glad he's going to talk about the teachers and everything else, and I'm glad that the teachers had a great day today. And the fact is, this is what I wanted. It wasn't, I'm not against sports people. I'm not against that, because first of all, emotionally, physically, Karen has been telling me this whole time, what did she do on vacation? She tracked, she rode her bike all around wherever she went. You know, it's outside, it's exercise, it's emotional, it's physical, it's like, look at my background, I want to be at the beach right now. That I understand. It's making sure that we were just prepared. There's no reason to rush, some rushed, and then they pulled, and they were red, and tomorrow they're green, or whatever the damn colors we are. But the fact is, as long as we're prepared and ahead of time, there was no rush. So all of you who waited, and, and thank you for waiting for this special meeting, I know you just went on three of them today. Melissa, five just in one day, I understand, and I want to thank you, because now Karen just went, we just went like that. It was just like, thank you, Karen, she's on top of it, she'll work with Brian, she'll work with Ben, and that's what I care. I don't need to know. She don't have to work with me, even though I text her all the time, I call, you know how they say you have a friend in your pocket? I have a Karen in my pocket, because every two minutes I'm texting her. What do I do? At that meeting, I texted last week, what should I do? And she says, it's fine, we need to do this process. I am more happy now that we all know the process, well, I'll get through this, Brian will answer some of the questions. Karen, if you want to stay, you can, we're not saying you have to, but you know, just to reassure, and honestly, out of our respect, I know you want to go. I don't think it's going to be long. If you could stay, because some of the questions, I'd rather get it all out, let the kids go, move forward like the teachers are doing, and let's move forward for tomorrow. So if you don't mind staying, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Joel?
So the contract, the contact tracing doesn't really concern me, because at that point, it's kind of too late, people are already sick and have already exposed. All it is letting you know, hey, heads up, you know, you might be in trouble. And so I'm more concerned about the preventative procedures. And so Karen, if, I'm concerned where HIPAA is going to get in the way of effective notifications. So if on a, you know, Tuesday morning, you get a report in from the state, and it says, you know, you know, Joel Famaza, the junior GHS has tested positive, and you call me up and say, hey, Joel, what are you hanging out with? And I say, I mentioned I play on the boys' soccer team. And, oh, doesn't it suck, I'm going to miss this afternoon's game? At that point, you know, are you able to call Brian and say, hey, one of your players is, even though it may be, huh, you know, even though they kind of figure out it's me, because I wasn't at practice yesterday, and everyone else was, you know, like, will HIPAA get in the way? Or will you go like, hey, keep your team from going into Danvers tonight, because Danvers doesn't need a team that's been exposed to Joel, you know, bumping into him on the field tonight?
Yes. So that's exactly how it happens. But we wouldn't necessarily call the whole team off, or the whole game off. It would depend on when you became symptomatic two days prior to that. So it's like a whole bunch of rules, and the nurse will go through that and find out, were you symptomatic, were you not symptomatic, when were you exposed to other teammates? Any of the teammates who you were closely exposed to, close contact, they would have to quarantine for the two weeks. That's the only, so when we say, you know, it's a little late, once we get the testing, it is late. I mean, yeah, we'd rather prevent it in the first place. We always want to do that in public health. But sometimes we're left, you know, kind of picking up the pieces. The good thing, the good thing in a way about this particular virus is that you have 14 days to stop it in its tracks. So if you guys were playing soccer together, you're already sick. But if we can find out who you were closely contacted to, keep those people isolated away from others while they're in that incubation period, we're going to prevent them from spreading it elsewhere. So it is preventative in a way, the whole notion of the 14-day quarantine. So again, we would work with you, and yes, we would be working with the employer, the manager, the coach. Those are all people that we talk with, and we have, there are ways in which the nurses can talk with, again, if it's in a business setting, we can speak with managers about what's going on. There's permission we obtain, and there's a whole process. But we do it all the time, and it's really important, because sometimes the person at work knows a bit more about something, or might know another employee who's been sick versus just talking to the employee. So it is really important that we talk to the manager, the coach, this principal of the facility in which there is a case, if it's a cluster. We don't typically, we're not going to, you know, be tracing every individual with, within an industry. But in the case of kids, we would be focusing, we would definitely be talking with the coach. And we would, when we contact people, again, we, again, just say, you've been exposed, you've had a potential exposure. And those teammates, they'll probably figure it out, but they may not know it could have been, you know, through another event they were at, or history class, or marking at Market Basket that night. So they, they don't know for sure. We won't confirm or deny. But, you know, people do get more used to the idea that, shoot, I had an exposure. And it really does, you know, we've had several in my house alone already. And it does kind of throw your world into a little bit of, you can't do what you were expecting to do, and you need to, but the more we have of it around the community, if we have another time like last spring, people do get used to it, they understand. They won't be the only one in quarantine in the community, just kind of what, what we'll all have to deal with a bit. So did that answer your question, Joel?
It did, but also it kind of, you know, it raised a similar concern, which is the discretion or the fluidity at which the call is made, you know. So again, I just, you know, my hypothetical, I'm on the boys' soccer team, I missed practice yesterday, but you know, a bit at practice and previous games prior to yesterday, you know, how do we determine, who's to say, you know, of my, you know, 18 teammates, which ones I was in close contact, I was doing drills with all of them, I was, you know, like that's, you know, it seems almost worris, and I understand from a pragmatic perspective, there's a way to preserve, say, well, you know, I think these 12 players really weren't closely exposed. But that's, that's so subjective, and it makes me nervous, not necessarily for us, but you know, maybe another community where they're playing that same game. They go, well, you know, Joel, I don't think he was really all that close to the other 17 people on the scene. I, I think we're okay, let's go to Gloucester tonight, we're going to be okay. And the reality is, like, you know, Joel from Danvers really was in close contact, and they should not be coming to Gloucester. And the poor Gloucester team is oblivious, be like, well, you know, they're here, and they have a health department, and they have a, a coach, and if one of their is sick, I'll show up.
It could hypothetically happen. I cannot imagine any coach or athletic director wanting to be that team, because I think the school committee in the community, the parents, the state would come down very, very hard if they knew that there was an active case, if they knew that the team was meant to be quarantined, or half the team, and they didn't. I think that would be the end of their season. So, and it's, it's not the sort of thing you can hide. The contacts will be listed. Anytime there's a case in the school, there, we have a DPH, we have an Epi assigned to Gloucester, an epidemiologist, sorry, who solely works with Gloucester on school-related cases, should we have one. So there's a lot of eyes on that, and it really doesn't take long, when you're doing contact tracing, to find out sort of how the connections happened. And I just think people are really responsible. I mean, these athletic directors and coaches and kids, I mean, they really want to play, and I think that if an athletic director or coach is aware, and a public health department, they're going to, they're going to take it really seriously. The public health nurse in that town is going to say to the young person what they can and can't do, is going to find out who those close contacts are. And yeah, if it's the case of, I was at practice the last three days during my infectious period, and we all do drills, and, and we were all, you know, we were in close contact, all of us, then it may be that the whole team has to quarantine. But again, it's outdoors, and you have to be within six feet for 15 minutes to be considered a close contact. So, but the nurse, I think, you know, these nurses do this all the time, and they are really skilled at honing in on how much of an exposure happened, how contagious the person was, what were their symptoms when they were potentially exposing others. And they'll be looking at all of that. There is no guarantee, right, that people won't come to work having some symptom, I mean, there's just no guarantee with any of this. But again, if we focus on most people, we'll do the right thing most of the time, and, and studies show again, and again, again, that will keep our transmission low. That's what we aim for. I don't know that you can prevent people who choose just not, you know, not to be truthful to a nurse, or their doctor, or whoever.
I guess my concern, and this is probably me have my wear hat on, so right there, you reminded us that a close contact is defined as within six feet, more than 15 minutes. And so you could, with a straight face, and within that guideline, say, well, you know, Joel was at practice for the last three days, and he was contagious all three of those days, but it was outdoors, and there was at no point where he was, you know, within six feet for 15 minutes. You know, he was in six feet for 30 seconds here, and 90 seconds there, maybe for three minutes during, when the coach is talking, but otherwise, there was no one 15-minute period, and there might not even be an aggregate. And so in that situation, no one on my team is going to quarantine, because none of them qualify as a close contact. And without breaking any rules or bending any truths, you'd be able to say, this entire team, except for Joel, who is sick, can go get on that bus, and go to Danvers, and play a game, right?
Again, it depends on the case, but that happens in workplaces. So I don't know if MIAA has developed any stricter guidelines around defining close contacts than what we use. I can only tell you what we use for, like, the general population. But, you know, if, if I was diagnosed with COVID, I don't go into work, but if I only exposed, you know, one other, if I only had close contact for 15 minutes with one other person in my office, then, then that's the only person that needs to quarantine. The other people don't need to quarantine, and we don't, you know, we just follow the guidelines exactly, because there are, if you start over-quarantining and making up your own rules, that can get you into trouble, too. So we follow the guidelines. These nurses will ask a lot of questions and hone in on what's redefined as close contact. Now, there's a couple of exceptions to close contact, that 15-minute rule. If you live in the house with someone, so, you know, if a, if a soccer player has four brothers or sisters, and they would all be considered close contacts. And then Desi has some guidelines, as you know, about elementary kids. If they're in an elementary classroom for so many hours all day together, then there are different, a little bit different definition of close contact. But in the case of sports, you know, I don't, the nurses will be working really, really closely with DPH, following those guidelines to a T. But if they determined that kids were not close contacts, then they're not going to shut down the whole operation if one person gets sick. It's kind of like the flu. I mean, if you think about it like that, it's kind of like any other, if, if they weren't exposing other people, I mean, oftentimes, people are, they might be on a team, but they got sick, and where they stayed, they weren't even coming to school, or they weren't even coming to work. So there wasn't even that exposure. It really depend, and it would be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, and I can assure you that the state Epi's and our nurses would be erring on the side of caution. So they might likely say, okay, we can't get the full 15 minutes of any one kid or all the kids, but, you know, they've been practicing every day, it's been hot, they've been, you know, they might have stretched, they might err on the side of caution. They would err on the side of caution. So that's what I can tell you on that. And I think, I think, you know, this is what they do. And the epidemiologists are going to be particularly skilled at school and school-age environments, and they're going to be asking a lot of those questions, and really thinking through, they're going to want to know about water bottles, and where are they, and what do they use? And there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions that will come in when the nurse is really trying to tease this out.
Just a quick, just a quick note on that. As far as the practices and everything, obviously, number one is prevention. We obviously want to prevent all this at all costs. But part of the tracking, and it'll be covered a little bit in the presentation, is practicing in cohorts is one of the biggest thing. It is going to be a big challenge for the coaches, if, whether or not we have a season right now, or if we're a practice season, they're going to have to practice in cohorts the majority of the time. So they'll have groups of individuals together, say, your 10 defensemen are all in one group, so they know all drill work, they're always around them. Also, every day will be, prior to walking on the field for practice, games, or walking on a bus for a road game, will be a checklist every day, a 10-point checklist, whether it's the coach, myself, or another athletics employee is going to go through with every kid. And so we have that record of every day, who was at practice, at the game, on the bus, any symptoms they may have had. And then also from the coaches, I'll have an idea of their cohorts. Granted, like you said, in a game, they're all over the field to a point. I mean, in esports now, at an older level, it's spacing out more. It's not like watching 40-year-olds play soccer, and they all group together and everything, and it's like herding cattle. But it's, I think we're going to, the precautionary part is obviously the key, and not even to get there. But those are some of the steps that we're going to take prior, that will make the, more of a challenge, obviously, and I understand that, but for my coaches as well, to be aware of who's around who on the field. To be aware of who's around who on the field and when you're breaking up practices and making practice plans, taking all that into consideration.
Thank you. Kathy.
Brian, following on that, is there, does the MIAA? Have any form or do we plan on communicating? To families or or athletes? Kind of the shared responsibility aspect of this. You know, that we're all counting on you for, you know, responsible behavior and we're counting on you to. Really stay home with symptoms. Do we have them sign like some of the colleges have had? Their students sign or or do we just really send that message that we really? Are counting on them to be. You know, to be responsible so that our community can stay safe and so they can stay safe. You know, so I'm just wondering what the expectations are.
I think the biggest one will be, it will be communication with that. As far as forms and paperwork, there are various. Between the NFHS, the National Federation of High School Sports, the MIAA. I've got another one here from the MI double A's. Medical support task with all the various questions. So I'm gonna design something and even some of our other ADs in the conference have designed some as well and shared them. So. We're gonna have a very thorough checklist. I've actually even started looking into potential online ones, but. I really wanna have the coaches to be hands on, so they discuss it with the kids and they know everything. And so. It's the coaches, myself, or as I said, one of my other athletics employees. That are directly speaking with each of the individual athletes, expressing the seriousness of this. If you're not feeling well, if you are shortness of breath or. You have a sore throat or you have something going on for that day. You need to be honest with us because this is a serious situation now. And it we're not gonna hold it. I mean, it's something you always run into sports that. Kids will try and tough it out in this and that and they wanna play through an injury or whatever it might be. But this is for the well being of everyone. The the health of the entire city, state, everybody. This isn't just about you being able to play a game because you have a tweaked ankle or anything. So. That'll be the biggest thing is the communication from the coaches, myself, my staff. And being honest with the kids and the kids being honest with us and portraying that to the parents. I don't think a written contract, basically to just have them sign off like I want my kid to be honest or the kid saying, I'll I'll be honest. I don't know if that's the way to go or it's just more the communications like the parent meetings that I have. Because there's gonna be a, have to do something before the season. I'll have to have communication with the parents, whether it's a video conference. That they just watch. If it's a large Zoom, it's gonna be hard to get a large Zoom with everybody. But just that communication and stress the importance of it.
Thank you, Brian. Just, just, do you have a? Sort of a presentation that you were gonna make? We've kind of jumped into questions to you. And I don't know whether we're. Whether you just continue going this way or whether you just wanna make a statement?
Why don't we just, I, there's only a couple more slides in addition to what there was last week. I thought that Ben, if Ben can share that, I'll just, it's some things that have come up. Within the past week, obviously topics and concerns that everybody had last week that. We investigated further to try and give you as much information as possible. So I get you that. It might answer some of the questions that that people have.
All I'm saying, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Samantha, do you have a question for Karen?
I can wait.
Okay, or if it's Brian, let's let Brian make his present.
Thanks.
Just a second, folks, while I find. Having some technical difficulties here, be right with you.
I can actually get started. I know what the first couple of slides will be to kind of give you guys an overview. The first few slides in the presentation were actually all of last week's. I wasn't gonna go through those step by step, but just. Breeze through them quickly of just all the basic overviews that we covered last week, but those again can be addressed in questions if you, if they come up. Some of the new things that are new topics that did come up. The first one I was gonna address was a. Meeting the athletic directors in the Northeastern Conference. We got together this week. To start planning. Obviously Gloucester, not knowing our situation, some schools are able to play, some schools are out, but. We wanted to start putting something in place as our league, to be honest, was was behind a lot of other leagues due to the fact that so many schools were initially in the red. Many other leagues had a hundred percent participation for this fall and they could move right ahead with making a schedule and all their safety plans. So. We met yesterday and some of these plans are things that will be put in place if we are to play in a fall one season. Number one, it would be just a Northeastern Conference. To limit. Obviously seeing more student athletes around the Commonwealth or anything. We're not traveling to non-league games. Any of our non-league opponents we were initially scheduled for will not happen. As far as our Northeastern Conference, the sports that we're discussing right now are making a decision on. Number one, cross country, more or less what type of season we're looking at. For the cross country team, it would be five meets. Running meets for the season, basically fifty percent. For all of these teams, it's basically cut in half from what they usually would do by the time we're starting now and just more safety precautions that we don't need to be playing. Other cities as much. But for cross country would be five meets. Once the season does officially start. We would be taking the advice from the MIAA and I believe maybe the EEA may have also. To only have one course for the entire league. Typically, we would run our home meets at Stage Four Park. Or Ravenswood, they recommend having one course in all dual meet. So one week we're running against Saugus. All the meets will be at PBD High School and they're gonna be in charge of spacing. Out the meets, spacing out any spectators and everyone would just go to that one individual place. Some, a place like we have Stage Four Park where the meets would also take only, only take place on Saturdays. It would be tough to play. There's sometimes many spectators, are not spectators, but just people visiting the park. So we would wanna avoid that at all costs. So our plan is to have one meet per week for the cross country teams. And that would be on Saturdays at PBD High School. And as I said, each week we would only be competing against one other team. The next sport would be, and I'm going just alphabetically by sport, no preference or anything. Field hockey, varsity and JV teams. They would basically be cut down to a ten team schedule. They would be playing on Mondays and Thursdays. Each week, specifically those days, nothing else floating. The golf team would be a ten match season. Golf is a little bit different because we. I do have to work around golf courses, tee time availability and everything. So there's no set date. But if we were to go, I would work closely with Peter Hood at at Bash Rocks and. Set what home dates we would be able to host that. So that's this slide that he has, we have up right now. It's exactly what we're talking about. There is a typo. I did type Mondays and Tuesdays for field hockey. It is Mondays and Thursdays they would play. Because we are trying to separate all of these different sports. So if field hockey is playing a game, they might be away. Our soccer teams are at home practicing. To limit the interaction and the cross. Crossing of paths with all the student athletes. So I said golf is a ten match season, basically five at home, five on the road. Depending on tee times and course availability. The soccer teams, both boys and girls, varsity and JV teams would be ten games as well, similar to a field hockey team. Those games would be played on Tuesdays and Fridays. And just as always, soccer, if the boys team is on the road versus APBD, the girls team is at home hosting APBD. And as I mentioned earlier, I believe it was with Samantha's question is. As you see it lined up like field hockey, say Monday, we play field hockey versus Saugus. We're gonna do the same. We're gonna do our best to do the same on Tuesday that our soccer teams are playing Saugus. So if there was ever sort of any case or any contact tracing we needed to assist the public health with. We could say we played this small group here. This town here is all we've played over these couple of days. And that's basically the last point I made. And the next slide. Transportation for this. Basic overview and we can look at it further, but. The biggest point of of emphasis right now, after really looking closely at meeting with the other ADs. We would basically be cutting in half our normal season. And user fees would stay at the same rates as always. We would not be able to pro rate just because it's a shorter season. To be able to supply buses. With that, we should be able to cover the majority of everything and and avoid one of the big conversations last week of. Of definitely no carpooling, but even having to depend on family transportation. With what we budgeted for the amount of games that we typically have in a year. As well as sometimes for some of the sports, we have to anticipate a potential postseason game. We might need a bus for and everything. We should be in general able to cover with those teams budgets. Buses. Now, the way the buses would work, as we said, I still would have to work closely with Adam Mayo. I did give him a brief update after my meeting. That what kind of buses or what type, how many buses total for the whole fall, what days, as that prior slide showed. We would. Be separate buses. So if the varsity girl soccer team was playing at Mascanama at at four o'clock. They would be hitting the road early on their own bus and then after that would be the JV bus. There would be separate buses. To keep the distance and obviously follow all guidelines with spacing on buses. And as I said, I believe that the immediate budget for those teams, we should be able to 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 make that hopefully work. Fan limitation at games. This will be a big one and this won't be a popular one and we understand that. We've looked at a lot of other leagues around the area and the state. The CDC, excuse me, the EEA guidelines for outdoor events is a maximum of fifty. People besides the players and coaches and officials on the field. So that's obviously very tough if you're playing a game such as field hockey or soccer where you've got potentially twenty kids on the team. If every kid's guardians or parents were to show up, we're well over fifty. So what our league will be doing is families can only travel, or excuse me, can only attend home games. So we cannot have visiting fans and this is just gonna be a big thing of communication with each of the athletic directors of all of their families. That they will not be able to travel on the road to watch games. If they were to show up someplace, they wouldn't be let into the stadiums. They would, they stayed on the outside, but as far as we're concerned, inside say Newell Stadium. We would only be allowed to have two of our own players' family members. We would be tracking that as well. It'd be kind of an advanced thing that the coaches get a list of what, if it's just parents coming or maybe one day the two. A sibling and a grandparents coming, we're gonna keep track of that and we need to stay enforced that closely. This is very common with a lot of leagues. Some leagues are doing one family member for. Each of the teams. The Cape Ann League, basically our closest league and geographically and similar to our demographics of a league. They're not allowing fans for at least the first two weeks of the season. They're gonna see how that plays out. So that is our plan for right now. Also working with Cape Ann Live, who does a lot of live streaming of our home games on Facebook and YouTube. I spoke with Jim or I've communicated with Jim Capillo, who runs that. As I said, he's he's videoed many games at our field. I would do our best to have them at every home game and that would be likely varsity and JV. That will be another bonus. If we are to play games. The junior varsity teams, we will be playing all of them on the turf. Where typically they have to play at O'Malley and on the grass fields because we need the spacing. Daylight, having to use the lights and everything. If we need to play back to back to limit the amount of interaction with teams. So that would be my goal is to be able to to. Have Cape Ann Live livestream all of our home games. So if anyone cannot make it, it also does help our opponents' families. Many of the other schools in the conference will be looking to try and do the same thing. Working whether with their local cable companies, some of them might have a video program in their school where they could. Livestream to help. So if we were on the road, I would do my best to see if the other school had any information I could send off to our families to say, watch the game live here. The third step here is what we briefly discussed before, that every participant will complete a screening questionnaire. With the coach and athletics employee, myself. Prior to every game, practice and entering a bus for a road game. This will also properly attract. Properly track attendance, attendance for every event. Because if we need to know who was at practice what day or who was on the bus a certain day, that maybe some symptoms came down with somebody that will be able to track. For all of those for every team. Next slide, Ben. Thank you. The next topic that was more or less brought up last week was just more. More information, safety wise. I know this weekend I emailed all of the school committee and the mayor with as many links and I apologize if it was a lot. Because I'm looking at all the printed up papers all over my desk right now, but. A lot of the documentation and this is some of the important ones, the return to play guidelines. From the MIAA Sports Medicine Committee. The EEA's guidelines for youth and adult amateur sports activities, which obviously right now we have been in for a while in phase three, step one. The DESI, MIAA joint guidance on modified sport seasons for the the current academic year. And then even the sport specific rules and modifications and guidelines for all the sports that we're specifically playing. I know each of those had anywhere from four to seven pages of rules. The first few pages were general rules for all sports. We're gonna have to follow. Safety precautions before games, during games, after games. But the last couple pages. Were sports specific with what needs to be followed. So I did wanna get all of those to you where that might even be something. Some of those questions I did send it to Carol. Karen as well this weekend to get, to give her a heads up of just some of the information I've given you and. A lot of the stuff that I'll be following and obviously with her guidance on that and and any other adjustments that she feels her department or office thinks we should make will. Definitely work closely with that. And then there's many other resources. Some of the links I sent you is just that MIAA Task Force page. Where they have many resources, whether it's national committees and their recommendations or anything of that sort. So. Next one, Ben. Thank you. Another topic that was very important to to you guys last week was teacher feedback. And I appreciate that and I think the teachers did as well. So I sent out to the Gloucester High School teachers a survey with four basic questions. I was just specific about each sport. As far as their their safety level or how safe they feel. So what I've got is four pictures or four graphs basically of all the results. It was an anonymous. Survey I took. I didn't want them to feel like I was overlooking which teacher said what and 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 the same for them. I didn't think, I didn't want them to worry about this and I didn't wanna get offended by anybody. Which hopefully would get over it, but. So the first one here that we're showing is cross country. As it says here, we did get sixty responses from faculty. And they're color coded, similar in all the different graphs. First one is blue for cross country, boys and girls. This is our faculty feels forty one point seven percent feel very safe. With that sport being conducted right now. Somewhat safe, twenty one point seven percent. Neutral on the situation for cross country. Our staff was eleven point seven percent. Somewhat unsafe, our our staff members felt were about ten percent of them. And then fifteen percent of the sixty responses did feel very unsafe with cross country happening. The next one to the right would be the next sport. Again, I I put them in order by just alphabetically, no preference. There was also again sixty responses for this one. First, very safe, twenty one point seven percent of the staff felt very safe with field hockey. Again, twenty one point seven percent was somewhat safe about field hockey. Thirteen point three percent of the the results were neutral about the sport of field hockey and safety. Eighteen point three did feel somewhat unsafe about the sport of field hockey being played at this time. And then twenty five percent did feel very unsafe about field hockey. Benefit, the next one, thank you. The next sport is golf. Obviously listed last week, like we said, is one of our lower risk sports. Golf, as far as the staff was concerned, forty six point seven felt very safe with that going on during this fall season. Twenty three point three percent somewhat safe. Thirteen point three percent neutral. The staff feeling somewhat unsafe about it. I'm gonna be honest, unless somebody can add that all up really quickly is obviously the smallest amount in green right there. And then very unsafe, there was eleven point seven of the sixty responses. Did feel on very unsafe with golf happening this fall. And then the last sports are boys and girls soccer. This one here had fifty nine responses, one neglected to to fill this one out. So of the fifty nine responses. Eighteen point six percent felt very safe with soccer happening this fall. Twenty five point four percent felt somewhat safe with soccer occurring. Eleven point nine percent were neutral. Eighteen point six percent of the staff that completed the fifty nine responses felt somewhat unsafe. And twenty five point four percent felt very unsafe with soccer occurring this fall. Also with that, I did just. Leave a feedback area for if anyone had comments. There was about twenty, twenty individuals on the staff or faculty that did give a few comments and kind of like I said last week. kind of like I said last week, and like it's probably been for you guys dealing with all of these situations. It was all over the board. There were some people say let the kids play. Some did have hesitations and were worried. Some were just a hundred percent, and they just said, I don't feel safe. I have maybe family at home, and they don't think it's worth the risk and that we should focus on academics. So of those, like I said, about twenty individuals did just give brief comments. Just all over the board, feeling different ways, supporting obviously the data that we just provided. The last couple slides I have are just to give you updates of where other schools are at. And knowing where other school committees have been at with these decisions. And as I said, the top, the most important ones are the Northeastern Conference, because these are the schools that if we were to play now or when we play at all during this this school year, these are our primary opponents. These schools here, again, in alphabetical order, Beverly, Danvers, Marblehead, Mascanomit, PBD, Salem, Saugus, and Swampscott. All of them are obviously not red cities at this point. All of them have been approved for fall one to play starting in the next week or two. The date next to it, Beverly nine twenty one, they're officially starting this Monday with their tryouts and practices. Danvers is a little bit later with ten two. Marblehead, I did put in parentheses, they actually have their meeting tomorrow night to get the final okay on this, but from all information that's come in, it seems as if they will be going with the fall one season. I do not know what their timeframe as far as date would be to start the practices or tryouts. Mascanomit will be starting this Monday, the twenty first with their practices and tryouts. PBD, I did get off their phone with the AD right before the phone call that it looks like it's probably going to be next Wednesday will be their first official day. The twenty third. Salem High School will be starting tryouts and practices this coming Monday, the twenty first. Saugus was approved by their school committee last night, but they still need to set a date. Their principal, in-house principal and athletic director were planning on meeting to figure that out. And they were targeting between nine twenty five and nine twenty eight. Swampscott, I confirmed with their their AD today as well that Monday is when they're starting practices and tryouts. The reason why I bring up the practice and tryout date is all seasons, the MIAA requires a certain grace period of practice days before any competitions can happen. So for this fall season, it's fourteen days. So basically, anyone that's taking advantage of starting as early as possible on the twenty first. I believe it's going to be about ten five, October fifth will be their first competition. Only sport that they do void that and only make it, I think, five practices is golf. They do not have to practice for fourteen days. Prior to their first competition. The other three schools in the conference at the bottom there are still in the red or a red status, Lynn Classical, Lynn English, and Winthrop. And those ones there will be, as of now, still playing in the fall too, in February twenty second. The other schools that I feel like I put these in here because they're geographically so close to us. Many of us are very familiar with some of the towns, our neighboring towns like Rockport and Manchester Essex. But this is the league Cape Ann League is basically like our are cloned to a point. A lot of their schools are a little bit smaller than us, but they are a league that our league works very closely with when making any league decisions, playing games, any of that. So the Cape Ann League does now have eleven teams because Mascanomit did move to our conference this year. Of the eleven teams, all eleven were approved by their school committee. To play a fall one season starting in the next week or two. The only one I did make note of was Linfield, as many of you might be aware, last week Lynnfield did appear on the map as a red town. So they are currently ineligible to participate. But prior to that, I did confirm that they, school committee had approved them to play in their Cape Ann League schedule. They are doing the same as what the Northeastern Conference anticipates. They're only playing within their league. And then the other North Shore towns, schools that we generally compete with quite a bit through MIAA competition is the only reason why I'm bringing up some of these schools that they're they're ones that a lot of our various sports play. Bishop Fenwick, Essex Tech, St. John's Prep, and St. Mary's are all going forward with starting a fall one season. For the five sports or the four sports that we've been discussing this whole time. St. Mary's is a very adds a lot of questions as it is in located in Lynn. So many people wonder how that is able to be played. But apparently they don't play any games or any practices in in the city of Lynn. But as I said before, all of these schools I'm even listing here, we would not be playing anyways, but it's just to give you a kind of a barometer of where other schools in the North Shore region are at. And the last one is just, just some figures put together quickly from looking at last year's budget. What we did bring in on ticket sales and gate receipts for some of the games, because I know this may come up, some of the questions in regard to to budgeting and transportation and user fees, we will be bringing in. So this just is a basic overview of revenue from user fees last year by the three fall seasons. I do have some other spreadsheets I started last year in my second year trying to break things down even more by sport. To see what we bring in for each sport and how much each sport does cost. Revenue of gate receipts, which I understand that may be a factor this year. Gate receipts, we do only charge admission for football, boys and girls, basketball and hockey. But not knowing how the winter seasons are going to look, and obviously some of these restrictions we've talked about with attendance and everything, not quite sure how that's going to figure out. And then our transportation budget. Annually, it's thirty seven five and we are also, if from what I understand, last year I was introduced to this was that the city does match that to assist with transportation costs for athletic events. So as I said, I threw those few slides there hoping to give some more answers. I know there were a lot of questions last week, and as I mentioned before, I completely agree and appreciate the fact that you weren't comfortable with it. As I said, many other school committees, I did watch theirs and they were inquiring, but the fact that our families and our student athletes can know that our school committee does care about them. It's not just some quick decision to just, okay, yes or no, but to get the right answers. So I do appreciate that. And I guess we're open to questions or if there's anything else, Ben, that you wanted to discuss.
I'll just, sorry, I'll just add that what you see in front of you is simply a recommended motion from me. This is, this is our recommendation in working with speaking to Karen, but also then working with Brian and working with James Cook, this would be my recommendation as a possible motion, just for you folks to see. The difference from last week was just the recommendations, recommendations start recommended, recommended start date for practices. And trying to align it with the other NEC schools. But I'll turn this off now. And the committee can deliberate or ask further or ask further questions. Excuse me.
Yeah, I think we'll start with people asking questions and Samantha has her hand up.
So I have a couple of questions, but if you don't mind, I don't know if you need to go back to the slide where it lays out who who are who we are going to play and who has already approved to play for fall one. Thank you. Do you know how many of those are strictly remote for this year? If any, so I know Beverly, is Beverly High School fully remote?
James, do you have a better, you might have better sense of this than I do if you're here.
I'm sorry, Joel, did you?
I have a list for the full conference if you'd like it.
Of where they are now for going remote or hybrid?
Yeah, if you'd like.
That's helpful rather than me going through my latest conversation with the principals, because some of them have changed recently.
Right. So based on the the maps provided by the state. Beverly is green and they are hybrid. Danvers is green and they are hybrid. Gloucester is green, we are hybrid. Obviously Lynn Classical, Lynn English, then Field are all red, so they're not playing. Marblehead is gray, they are hybrid. Masco is pretty much gray. I think they're remote. That one put a star next to it because I was just double checking that one. PBD is green, they are hybrid. Salem is yellow, they are remote. Saugus is yellow, they are hybrid. Swampscott is green, they're remote, and then Winthrop is red, I think.
So Joel Masco, just to add to that, they're similar to us, they're starting remote and transitioning into hybrid. As are some of the other folks that you said were hybrid, they're actually transitioning like we are in remote right now, but transitioning into hybrid.
Right, they have intentions to be, especially as the as the season kind of lines up with the shift in, so I was kind of looking at that. Like when we shift into the school, it'll be kind of during the sport season.
Thank you. So just based on that, I just have a follow up question. So to me, it seems like our job is not really to question whether or not Karen and the public health department are going to do their job and whether or not Brian has a plan. It seems like you know, the plan is is pretty good, but what is the potential risk to our school community? And I think back to sort of Joel's questions about who's going to be considered a close contact. So say the team is considered a close contact are is every classroom that that team was in during that week, right? Say there was a potential exposure and everybody's considered a potential contact. A close contact. Will all of those classes have to quarantine? I mean, that seems like a big risk. No. Okay.
Karen, if you explain that, because folks get concerned about close contacts and close contacts, and it's not.
So yeah, I don't want, I wanted you to finish your question. We, that's it. Okay, yeah, so contacts of contacts are nothing. They don't need to do anything. So if a soccer player gets sick and she's in contact with five kids on the team determined to be close contacts, those five people have to quarantine. And but whoever they came in contact does not need to. So if these five people, they were close contacts of other people or they were in history class, their contacts are are nothing yet. They're fine. Now, if any of these five people turn to index cases, confirmed cases, which they can in the two week period, that's why you watch. And these five people are your index cases, or say one of them turns. Then you'd be looking at their close contacts. And and so that's how it goes. But if if a close contact gets told they have to quarantine, that's it. That's where it stops. Their contacts are nothing in terms of epidemiology at this point.
So that one person that tested positive, he or she, their classes would then have to quarantine or no?
Yeah, I mean, only if they're defined as close contacts, right? If they're, I think it's elementary and we can check what that ruling is with Desi, but I think it's really if you're in a classroom all day in a closed classroom. James knows, go ahead, James.
Well, I just that be, you know, folks, it is possible that given our seating charts, that folks who are sitting in in close, you know, at three, three, four feet, five feet near the person for a block, you know, which is forty minutes, would qualify as a close contact. So so I do want to, you know, make that clear, and that would be true of any of the classes, the seven blocks that that student is in.
Is Samantha talking about sports or we're talking about classrooms now?
No, I guess my point is, is that, you know, we we've gone to great lengths essentially to keep cohorts small and contained. And this is a, you know, we're going to inter-community interaction. So I, you know, that is, that's different. That's different than what we've been talking about. And so, you know, I think that is more exposure than we have. We've even discussed in relation to schools and we've gone and we've talked at great lengths about making sure that our exposures were low in school and our contacts were low in school. So I guess I'm just, I'm trying to understand if there is a domino effect in relation to intercity interaction and if that could have an impact on our schools, our whole school community. Or if you think that that is, if that is unlikely. Sabadia, does that, does that?
How am I going to say? Okay, so let's start March to now, totally different aspects as far as COVID. How we quarantine, how, because in the beginning I was a tracer and you didn't even have to be tested or did half of the may for what they did. We actually had everyone in the household sleep in separate rooms when you were there. Nobody could go out. It was fourteen days. It was everyone you were contact. Now the contact is totally different. So let's look at the scenario from March to now. We have in the city, we have the city hall, we have the fire department, we have the police department, we have everything else. So the fire department actually sleep together, no offense to people, but they do sleep overnight. So have you heard in the community that we've had this outbreak? We've still always been five and underneath. Our nurses, ourselves are, you know, of what's happening. They are on top of this, and that's what we have to do is we have to one, because you know what, it really bothers me as far as, you know, I'm glad he did the survey with the teachers. When I was talking about the budget, it wasn't really the budget on your side. It was a budget of make sure kids got education first. And just so everyone knows, last time they heard me complaining, all the kids that I was complaining about who didn't have transportation. Yea to all of us putting our work together. Thank you, Ben. They have transportation. They were in school today. So thirty two kids who couldn't go to school. That was my biggest bitch. It's education first, not sports. Not that I have anything against sports. Okay, I need it. I know. I can hear people now saying, well, you should run the track. Well, fine. But I'm talking about education of children being in school first. That was my first priority. That's why I was complaining. Two, Karen wasn't here to answer these questions because there's a law, because it's similarity like the cohorts. Some of the people that they were saying that, oh, we're similar to Rockport. Rockport is that they're not even there. And what gets me is their schools aren't safe to teach, but yet you have YMCA after school programs all day. So we have a lot of, you know, people hypocrites. Okay, what I am saying is I trust my Board of Health. As your mayor, I trust my Board of Health. I trust all the nurses that you have in your school department. Do I trust us all? I'm hoping we are, because the fact is, you know what, no matter how much we plan or how much we do or how much we trace, whatever. It's up to us individually. It's up to us to know and teach our children what you need to do and not need to do, the same thing in the classroom. Like I said earlier, I can't promise one teacher anything, and I can't promise one teacher's safety, and that's killing me just like the rest of you. Ben was crying earlier. So wasn't I, because the fact today was the first day and it was the first day of torture. It's like, let's hope, you know, I love it. Let's sing, let's do that. We have to teach, we're teaching it to elementary, we're teaching it, but we need to teach it to our high school kids. You know, I know, you know, you know what, we have to let them know. They really have to be young, responsible adults. We have to let them know that we can pull this, as much as we all think emotional and everything else, we can pull it. If we feel that they are not doing stuff what they're supposed to be doing, they're not wearing the masks on the bus, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I'm sorry, it takes nothing to pull the sports. It takes nothing. Your money that your parents put into it, gone. Non-refundable people, because it's non-refundable. If I'm sorry, mm, gone. I spent it, your transportation. So the fact is that, you know what? It makes me a little nervous of the cohorts and how we doing it. But you know what? I think that we have to, in my opinion, as much as we did the surveys, much teachers are nervous what sports we need to look at. There's so many things you can do cohorts. I have to believe in the coaches and the training and our nurses, because first of all, we're such a little island. I don't give a shit. So sorry. What anyone gets or what hip or whatever, when someone gets something, we all know. Oh, the beach, Star Spots, this one, that one, this. We all know everyone's life of what's happening in this city. We knew it in March that, you know, people were texting the teacher, oh, guess what? He was near this one. Who was it? I believe that we as parents, grandparents, teachers, mayors, whatever, will help one another. Will actually look at one another and say, look, cut the crap, kid. You know what? You're not going to lose it. I need to play sports. I need to do that. I want to show them we can. If not, you've got all these people are going to say no, and they all hurt us tonight. They all are hearing us tonight. I'm not going to put my teachers in jeopardy. I'm not going to put my city in jeopardy. And I'm not putting the students in jeopardy or our Department of Public Health, because Karen's here and she's saying to you, this is how we do it. Technically, she'll tell you, we should be in the gray, not the green. We're doing wastewater that a lot of people say we don't have it. Can I guarantee that we're not going to play with a team that they're idiots and they didn't say anything? Absolutely not. But I can't guarantee either that you're not going to go to a supermarket and that person who's giving you your groceries doesn't have it either, because they're afraid. I don't want everyone to be afraid, and that's what's happening. The way we're talking, people now, this is what's happening all the countries and all other places, and we're meeting with mayors. People are afraid to come forward because you think they have lepers. You think that, oh, my God, what did they do to contract this? It's not a disease that it's kind of, it belongs to someone who's really, when they say, when they say low income, that really pisses me off. Because it's not about your low incomes. It's not, why is it that they're saying it's your low income? Why is it they're saying it's your, you know, your, your ancestry? Why is it they're saying that? First of all. First of all, we live here, we're Portuguese, we're Italians, we have blacks, we have Guatemalans, we have everything else and we still have five. Because in Gloucester, we're different. I don't know what's going to happen. And I'm hoping Brian understands and looks at me because I usually don't come on Zoom with my face this way. Because I'm exhausted. But the fact is, I hope you're looking at me to understand that your responsibility now is to watch these kids. You're going to babysit and your coaches are going to babysit. Because the teachers are trusting us to make the right decision. Because you know what? We don't have 100% and they're trusting us. So we all have to trust each other once. I'm going to vote yes tonight because the fact is, I'm going to trust you once. But believe me, I'm going to be all over your asses like you wouldn't believe. Because the fact is, I have a lot of people, my fire, my police, my DPW, my city, my school. It doesn't just affect your schools, people. It affects us all. And that's what I'm worried about. Your churches, your, everything you can think of. So I'm going to vote yes because I know that James, Brian, Ben and Karen, because I mean, really, all week long. And I bitch slapped Kim Driscoll for putting on Twitter that they want to play with red teams. I sent nasty things to the governor saying, what the hell is going on? You, you can't do that and yet you're allowing sports, but I'm going to have to close my restaurants. So we have two things. I can't go in a restaurant, but you're going to let me go watch a game? And I'm glad you said no fans. I'm glad they made that decision. Because that was bothering me. Yet I can't have too many people in a restaurant. It's going to be cold. I want to be palming the streets and you can't go outside, but yet we're going to have fans? I'm glad you said that, Brian, publicly. We're not allowing. I don't care. I'm glad because you guys are now thinking out of the box and thinking before we even mentioned that. So you know what? That's what I'm saying. Brian's already thinking about it. The coaches are thinking about it, saying, no fans. They're going to bitch. Know this. I'm glad. Because that was a big concern. We have a lot of here at stake. We're doing good. And I don't want to sit there and be in any other color than lesser. And so I'm watching you. That's all I can say is I trust my Department of Public Health. I trust my nurses and I trust the teachers because they know if someone comes in sick and they will go right down and they will say it because unfortunately, it's not breaking HIPAA when it's concerning a life. When they're saying, that kid looks sick to me and let the nurse decide. And that's what I want everyone to do. If you feel that someone looks it, go say it to the nurse. Let them deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel.
Thanks. So, so yeah, so I share, you know, some of, of the concern that, you know, Sam was putting out there as far as, one of the things that Brian says at every, beginning of every sports season when he pulls the parents in for the big meeting in the gym. He says, you know, these people are student athletes, student is before athlete for a reason because their education is, is more important than the athletics. Now, athletics isn't important, but when you have to, you know, put them on a scale, the, the educational component weighs heavier. And, you know, there is concern that we are providing exposure to, we're putting our ability to continue having education in person at risk. Otherwise would not be present through, you know, going forward and allowing our students to compete elsewhere and allowing students from elsewhere to come to our facility to compete. So that, you know, kind of like the mayor just said, you know, to Brian, you know, we've been fielding, just emailed and some phone calls from parents the last couple of weeks. But, you know, you're an athlete, you're a coach, you are the athletic director now. And you know the pressure you're going to be under to not pull the plug from students, from parents, from your coaches even. You know, I guess to put you on the spot, you know, are you able to confidently say to us that despite that pile of pressure you're going to be receiving to keep things going? That, you know, when the time comes, if the time comes to cancel the game, cancel a season, you will, you know, step forward and, and put yourself in that line of fire to make that decision, the right decision for the health of the city?
100%. I have no issues at all having to pull players off of a field. Tell them their season's done. Tell a parent that. We, obviously we're on this platform right now and there's so many here now. There were so many last week. With social media, everybody knows the importance of, of all this to everybody and how much it means to them. And if they, if it means that much, they're going to take the right steps. I met with my coaches briefly yesterday and I explained to them, this could go one of two ways as far as playing a season now or just having practice, whatever it might be, that they need to be ready to step up. They're already a month behind from where they usually are. And I said, you're going to make up for it really fast with the amount of work I'm going to put on your plates as well. Because I can't sit there and watch all of you all the time. But when you're on those fields and I can't drive by, I can't walk by the field and see kids with their masks down consistently. Okay, quick water break, that's about it. But it's, I have no issues at all if we get into any situation like that of pulling the plug.
Brian, you give us all the playtimes and all the practices. Believe me, we'll have people driving around for you.
I've seen, even, even this summer, I, and I didn't have any specific teams, but I heard from many people, I dealt with the city. I dealt with, I ran men's leagues this summer that had precautions and everything. And I dealt with a lot of various things and then everyone and their brother is basically watching. So I've told that to my athletes and everyone that you have no idea who could be picking up the phone after they see one thing for 30 seconds. So.
And is it correct that if, like Karen, Carol mentioned that if we stop, the season's over? Is that if we stop as a district or is it if one team has to stop, you know, where's that? Because again, that just kind of incentivizes staying in longer than you should. Because if there's a penalty for pulling back and forcing a game, you know, or the penalty for taking a pause and saying, hey, we need to take the next two weeks off. And if they let me take two weeks off, you're done for the season. That kind of incentivizes the not taking any time off at all. So where's the line on that?
Yeah, the, the big difference, and I really didn't cover it in the season. Basically, I said, each of the teams is going to play a 50% season. There's no postseason whatsoever. There are no Northeastern Conference championships. I don't think there'll be any NEC awards. It's, it's not about that this year. This year is 100% about getting our student athletes safely on the field. More for their emotional health, their social emotional health, mental health, physical health as well. As I said, I did mention that before, but it is an important part. There isn't, as competitive as some of, as I am, as my coaches are and athletes, those aren't the top priorities. And so if something was to be like, okay, you need to shut down for two weeks with this team or all teams, it's shut down. The schedule still remain in place. Those teams, we discussed this as ADs. If a team got shut down, if we were playing, I'm not going to use anyone specific, but if someone's playing us and we get shut down, that team then just doesn't play that day. They don't fill it up with another game. They, everyone in the league understands that risk of that. If somebody else in other town has any issues, there'll be no more, no making that game up. You don't play that schedule. And in two weeks, if our teams are cleared, obviously through the, the Public Health Department and we feel comfortable that we've got everything back on track, then we would think about returning to the, to field to play. But if we need to pull the plug altogether, then that will be, that'll be done.
Laura?
So I just have a two-part thing. I mean, from my perspective, there's every incentive for the student athletes to, to want to make this work. More incentive than if we're just going, if they're just going to the mall. I mean, you know, exposure is possible in all sorts of ways. And kids are out getting exposure in ways in which they are not monitored. So from my perspective, Brian, the coaches, James, Ben, like the systems in place actually work to, work to, from my perspective, and I could be too far from high school, but they work to incentivize students to, to do it, to stay safe, to keep. So they want to keep their season going, right? I mean, that's, you know, that's what we're getting. That's where I stand on this. My one question is, now that we've asked the teachers for their opinions, right? It's very clear that they're more comfortable with two sports and less comfortable with the others. We now have that information. So what, what do we do with that information? Right? We asked the question. And the, the 59 or 60 teachers who responded were clear in their answers. So. Yeah, that's, I just, I'm a little confused about what we do with that, with that data point. And that could be to Ben or James.
I think no sport indicated more than, it was never a majority of somewhat unsafe or very unsafe for any of the sports. The majority was only.
I think it was, but I, I don't have it in front of me. I mean, it was very clear.
Soccer was seen as close.
Golf and cross country were clearly, you know, in the, in the safe category if you combined. Field hockey and soccer were different. I don't have, I didn't, I didn't write down the numbers. But I just want to know, we asked the question. So what do we want to do with that information?
I, I had concerns about that myself. And my question about the, the, was how much information were the teachers given about? I mean, we've received a ton of information about what's safe, how it's going to work. I just wonder how much information the teachers had before they filled out or whether it was just kind of like, you know, going into it blind and saying, well, what do you think about the idea of this? As opposed to what you know about it?
See those charts again, like the soccer and the field hockey charts?
Yeah, I will. So I would, I think it's very important, this is 60 staff members, it's important input. It is not, it's not a vote. There's only one group that votes on this. And so I think that's really important for the committee to consider it as input, just like you're considering other input, you're considering families, which I know you've gotten.
Well, I mean, first of all, last week, I'm sorry to be rude, but I asked the question, did you ask your teachers? No one even cared. Okay? No offense to anyone. So I made them ask the teachers. So yes, if you didn't get enough information, but they heard social media. Now, whether you, it's soccer and field hockey, that's more hands-on. So absolutely. So what we, what we need to do is we need to show them that, yes, we have your concerns. We understand that. We're addressing them. We address them. How we're going to do it? What happens with the social distance and some of the teachers are on here, they're waiting and we're going to stay on top of that. That's the, that's our concerns too. I'm not concerned about golf. I'm not a golfer. I don't know how, how contact you get unless I hit, swing a golf club and then you better run. But the fact is, you know what? On the other ones, they can social distance. As far as field hockey, like we said last time in soccer, he said that we're not, Connor, whatever they're going to say. Brian said, how they're going to do that? Well, you know what? And that's what their concerns are. So that's what we watch. That's what he stays on the coach on top of. This is what the teachers have concerned because it is a little bit more closer. Soccer is a little bit more closer. You're allowed to do this. Because I guess Brian, last time you said that we're going to corner them differently or whatever. I'm not familiar with it in our field hockey. So that's what we said. We have your concerns. We're looking at the concerns. We saw them. I see the percentage wise and, and who feel that they're safe and unsafe. And that's what we need to watch. We need to say, Brian's going to need to say, you know what? Hey, kids, your teachers are concerned about your soccer and your field hockey. We need to prove to them that, you know what? It is kind of a close sport, but you know what? We're mature. We're going to handle this and we're going to stay more on top of them because it's a little bit closer than it is for golf and it is for your track and field. That's in my opinion. We're just going to stay on top of it more closely and be able to educate the students. You know what? Don't go, don't go, don't contact. We're not, we're not here to win. We're here for you to be out there. We're not here to tackle. You don't want, put it this way. When I play field hockey, believe me, that's why they put me in the, in, in the goalie because I would, I would attack people. You don't do that. Tell them. You just don't. You run and that's how they do it. And I think they'll be mature about it. I think that the students, actually, I talked to students. Okay? I talked to students who were on there. I talked to girls that play the field hockey. I talked, and this is what they said. Give us a chance. Give, if we fail, then it's our fault. I'm not listening to the parents and I have concerns from the teachers, but the student says, give us a chance. You put us in the school, give us a chance to prove that we can do this too.
Joel, back to your question.
For Sam's, Laura's question, yeah?
I went.
Oh, sorry.
I do have my hand up, but.
I saw your hand up.
So just, so on that last point, so 44.1% on soccer, 43.3% on field hockey, reporting one of the two unsafe options. But my question, again, just we discussed this last time, I want to get it back out there. Is if we start the fall season, which is already going to be an abbreviated season and, you know, things don't go well and the season has to be called off for us or for the district. That's it. We do not have the option of taking that fall two season. Is that correct?
We, you would have the option to apply for a waiver through the district. We're part of District Five of the MIAA. We will be able to, as soon as that, the, the one thing, as soon as you start, whether the first day of practice, whatever it is, then you're officially committed to the season. You cannot then just decide, you know, we're going to call it quits. We're going to play fall two now. Anything at that point, whether it's us that, that pulls the plug, the DPH, the district, we would have to, to submit a waiver to that district if we thought. And obviously that would be a situation, we would look at where we're at, why did this happen? So many other scenarios and that would come down to administration, bring it to you. Is this even worth it? It's not going to be, be just me throwing a waiver in to quickly say, hey, let us know, can we play in February? It would be a situation like, is it worth it? Did we, did we screw up? Did the student athletes not do their job, what, what the situation is? But there is still the opportunity that you could put the waiver in for, for the fall two season.
Okay. Because then just, you know, thinking of scenarios, looking at, you know, Salem and Saugus who are yellow right now. They both border at least one red community. Saugus borders three red communities. No, I say on this one gray community that's bordering, otherwise it's bordering only greens and red. Saugus is only bordering yellows, greens and reds. And so, you know, my, my worry is what if these, you know, what if the, the second wave kind of hits, you know, further down 128 where those teams are? And we end up, and it's, you know, us and, you know, Masco and, you know, I don't know. Winter for something, right? I don't know whether they're already right. Swanscut or something, right? We go, oh, you know, did we fight so hard to get this season? And we're just kind of playing, you know, two other teams and it feels like scrimmages. And I wish we had done this in the spring because this isn't a season either, you know?
Yeah, no, I completely understand that scenario. And then if it got to that level, that would be something that us as a league, start with the ADs, discuss it, what's going on? Take it to our principals, obviously, and up the line to say, this, this happened. And just figure it all out. I mean, knock on wood, hopefully of nine schools that can play right now. And I'm not sure where, Windsor has been very close and on the cusp for a couple of weeks. Hopefully we wouldn't have a major outbreak. And I feel like, as it's been brought up in conversations tonight, that the student athletes, given the opportunity, not just Gloucester, but just any student athlete for what they've already missed. Basically, all the spring sport athletes, their summers, everything's been adjusted. Even this, it's going to be hard if we play a season or if we have a practice, the restrictions put in place. But they just want that chance. And for some of you, you know that you've had a senior or you have a relative that's a senior, like this is it for them. They're probably, 95% of our kids are never going to play that competitive sport again after this high school season. So for them, I think the importance, and like I said, it's everyone in our conference. I think these kids realize that. For some of them, the, the 5% that do go to the next level, this season is so important for them to get exposure, to get out there, that they're not going to take those chances. That's where our leaders step up on these teams. We've got these captains for a reason. And this is where they need to step up. As much as we keep bringing up, obviously, myself, my staff, the coaches, this is where our senior leaders and some of our, our kids and our youth start to grow. And hopefully they take charge in these situations to keep our kids in line as well as the rest of the league. But I mean, that's definitely a concern. I feel like the, obviously, I mean, I, I wish, you guys have gone through this for a couple of months with these meetings that I, I wish I could just say, yeah, it's not going to happen. Nothing bad is going to happen. Can't do that, but I'm going to do everything in my power and in my coach's power to make sure we prevent it. And, and hopefully, and I think our student athletes will follow suit.
Thank you. Samantha has a question. I'd like to, you know.
I think Carol, Karen was.
Can I just further answer Joel's question from earlier? I just want to be clear, make sure people understand, there's, there's this sort of MIAA can, can cancel your league participation if you move into the red zone. That's the criteria as of now. That is the kind of main criteria they seem to be using with other schools. Whether they'll broaden their criteria and add some other public health metrics, I don't know. But at this point, I'm hearing that that is their rule. And if you move into red, they, that's it for you for this season. You, you can join again in that fall two or whatever. The other way in which there could be a suspension and then resuming play is if there was COVID cases on the team in which you couldn't field the team. So those kinds of breaks would not throw you out of the league unless it turns your city red, is my understanding. So just to clarify.
Thank you. Samantha?
I just have a budget related question. So maybe we can.
Gary's here and Brian is, we have a question. Now's.
Now's the time for questions. We'll make a motion and then we'll do deliberation. So if you have questions, now's the time.
So in the BNF meeting, Adam Mayo said that they can fit 26 players. And that includes coaches, I believe. Is that right, Adam? See there?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So for the field hockey and soccer programs that are going to have both JV and varsity, do you have a sense of how many players are going to be on those teams in total?
I can't go solely off registration. I have had registration open since the end of the school year. I like to open it early to get people up and up set. But just knowing our numbers from last year, say, field hockey, we had approximately 30 to 32 total kids in the program. So you're talking only about 15 on the bus for each of those. Soccer, last year with two levels, I want to say we were approximately around 40 players total in the whole program. So again, you split that in half and you go 20 and 20 plus one coach on each bus, basically, and we should be fine. I don't, I don't anticipate any issues. I sent Adam last night a breakdown of kind of our teams and the games and, and everything that I don't see any issues with too many. And then obviously we're following guidelines. I'm not going to crunch extra kids on. That'll be a point of emphasis with all the coaches when they have to make their rosters, like who's going to travel this day, who's going to, sometimes it's a rotating schedule. Maybe today you're going to play with varsity, but that one's going to go down here. But again, that, we start talking about cohorts, then I'm going to try and keep things as consistent as possible and say, sorry, I mean, kid might earn the job and move up to varsity. But just because the way this year is, you might stay down on JV for the whole season just to avoid so much crossing of bodies and everything.
So normally for away games, they would go on the bus together, the two teams.
Correct. Yeah.
So this year they would separate into teams. So there'd be two buses going to an away game. So with that being said, knowing that there's less games than normal, Adam was under the impression that because we're going to need more buses, there, there might not necessarily be a cost saving. So I just wanted to just, you said that you didn't see there was going to be any issues in relation to athletic fees covering the buses and knowing that we're going to have double the buses going to, to some of these games. I just want to be clear that there's not additional expenses.
Adam, can you clarify? Because what I thought I heard you say earlier tonight was that if you're taking a varsity team and a JV team, they use the same bus, but they go, they go to shuttle. So you take the varsity team first, come back, pick up the JV, take them, you know, because they played one after the other. Adam, do I have that right?
Yeah. So Brian had sent out the email to me last night, which I did look at. I just didn't respond to. Potentially if we are going to Danvers, Beverly, Peabody, the areas where we could shuttle one team out and then a bus would come back, get the other team and head back out. I mean, you're looking at mileage, you're just not looking at double drivers or double buses. But where you're going to be going further out to schools that may be further, you may have to take two buses because there's just not that time to get back from those non-closer school areas.
And there must be some cost savings in that with the bus driver's contract, with the minimum hours that they have to work. So that actually works to our advantage this year.
Well, and the other factor is they're going to be playing a lot less, we're playing half as many games. You know, twice as many buses, but half as many games. When I looked at last year's fall season, we probably had anywhere from 70 to 75 bus trips total. And now with this season, the makeup of it, we're looking at approximately 35. So it is basically right in half for everything because we'll be taking away, say, even league events. There won't be any postseason or anything of that sort. There, you're basically your 10 games or your five road games and that's about it. So.
Thank you.
So are there any further questions of either Brian or Karen or James or Ben? Or do we want to make a motion and go into deliberation?
Question for Ben to put the motion up because I want to move the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And the motion, Ben, no. The motion is to approve Gloucester High School's participation in the Fall One Athletic Season of the Northeast Conference and direct Gloucester High School to participate in the Fall One Athletic Season. Recommendation is September 1st to stop practices. That's the motion.
That's my motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Okay. Joel?
Sure. I'm going to, I think I'm comfortable moving forward to vote in favor of this. I was, you know, skeptical, but to echo the mayor's point, you know, we have a health department. We have a health director. I followed her guidance and trusted her in voting to, you know, go in person hybrid with the district. Superimpose my personal anecdotal feelings about the coronavirus on top of experts. And so I'm confident that, you know, we have, you know, Mr. Favada on record saying he's ready to, you know, pull the plug if it goes that way. And we have the mayor on record threatening him if he doesn't. So I think we have a pretty good safety net. And so if barring anything coming out of this discussion to convince me otherwise, I'm, I'm being to a yes vote right now.
Thank you, Laura.
Yes, I'm, I'm very much a yes vote for this. I think, I think, I think kids need sports if we can get it, get them to it safely. And it sounds like the plan that Brian and Karen and James and everyone is designed is, is as safe as we can be in this moment, which of course is full of uncertainty. And there's no, there's no way to be 100% safe. I hope that we can have Brian come back and report it, report to us how it's going at some point into the season and give us a sense of, you know, positives, negatives, challenges. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm wholly in favor of this, given what I've heard here tonight. I would like to hear if James has anything else he wanted to add to any of these presentations or questions.
Sure. I, I thought something important that came up.
Can I not ask James for a comment during deliberations?
You can ask James. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you, James.
Sure. Yeah. I thought something important that came up earlier that I would amplify in this context is when it came up that the students at Gloucester High School, they're going to be doing something after school. And so this is a supervised place with, you know, oversight, following guidance, guidelines with, with the coaches overseeing the students and with the administration overseeing the coaches. And it's not as if they're, you know, they're just going home and going to be there, getting ready for school the next day if we don't have athletics. They're going to be doing something. And this is a, a safe and productive, you know, place for students to be. And I think that's just, as you were saying, you know, there are risks all around. And, and this is in, in, in my estimation, where we're giving them some positive to do and a supervised location where we can minimize the risks for the students and the risks that they would bring to the rest of the community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to support this motion. As I said last week, I was ready to vote last week. I just want to say, you know, getting all the letters from the parents clearly shows that the parents have the trust and confidence in their kids playing sports. Gloucester is known for playing sports. We are proud of our sports teams. I can't imagine Gloucester without sports going on. Karen, Carol, I can't thank you enough for your input today. I mean, you are the leader in health and safety. So for me to try to figure it out, all I do is ask you questions and leave the decision up to you because you are the expert, not us, in my opinion. And Brian, couldn't ask for a better athletic director. This community has a lot of trust and confidence in you. The teachers have a lot of trust and confidence in you. You have a good team. You're committed to our kids. It clearly shows that. So if there was ever a time to depend on somebody, now is that time. And I know you are the right person to make sure that all the regulations are in place. I thank you for all that information you sent. I started to read it and then I gave up knowing that there's no reason for me to know all that information as long as you do. But kudos to you for your approach in bringing all these issues to us and having this long conversation, a thorough conversation to get us to where we are to feel safe playing sports during a pandemic, which is something you didn't think we could do, but we're going to do it because we're safe. So that's, that's good. So thank you all, and I will be supporting this motion.
Kathy?
I also was ready to vote on this last week. I have faith in our students for being appreciative and responsible with this particular opportunity. We know how much it's important to any athlete to be able to, you know, compete and be with teammates. I second Melissa's praise of Karen and Brian. We really are in good hands from both perspectives. I'm sure Brian has represented all of our concerns well with his other athletic directors when they're having discussions. And I think that those communities share the same concerns that we have. But I do think things are in place as best they can be, given the times. And all I know is I had a very happy kid today who unfortunately went to school at his desk, but he was happy to be at school and he will be happy to be playing sports with his teammates. So I, I think all the kids will be very appreciative and very responsible.
May it taken.
I wasn't ready last week at all. I wasn't ready at all. I wanted Karen, Carol, my director, who I have 100% faith in, to look at some of the stuff. Brian, I did read what you sent to me, so I could use it against some of the stuff that the governor wanted to put in place for businesses and stuff. Because it, it was very good information of how you're going to do it. I talked to the students and the students says, well, you're putting me in a classroom, so you trust me there, so you have to trust me here. And I never even thought of it, Brian, that some of them, this is their last time. And some of them are going to hopefully get their scholarships to go into college too because of the, some of the sports that they do play. My concerns was the transportation, not just this transportation. Like I said earlier, first education was the transportation for children going to regular school. And now the transportation, and I heard, you know, people last week talking about a little carpool. Well, you know what? First of all, if you're on the school committee, your child plays in the sport, well, of course you're going to go for it. So I, I, it's not that I wanted to shun Kathy or, you know, all of that about, you know, carpooling, which makes me nervous worse in carpooling because our high school kids can actually drive and who they put in the car and how responsible. And I've seen it. And you know what? Honestly, how many times we do have our mask on all day and then we, we take it off, we're in the car, someone comes to talk to you and you forget or whatever. You know what? It's responsibility. And I liked it that when James Cook says to us, you know what? They're his kids. He came to us to say, I need a delay because I can't make them safe and the teachers. And you listened and I'm so glad you did the survey with the teachers because it does make me a little bit more concerned on some of the sports. I had the same issues, but it's saying to them too, we do care. We're going to really pay attention to those two sports that you have concerns because I saw the percentage, 50/50 basically on somewhat, but yes, no, you know? So we're going to actually do even more and we're going to see what we can do to help you as far as, you know, if you, believe me, we'll, we'll, we'll find out where you're all practicing and we'll come look. But the fact is, to have the students be responsible for themselves, Brian, I like that you said that. You said, you know, my coaches can do whatever they can. And so can't you, but you're right. It's the responsibility of the students and if we have to trust the students. And, you know, so far, of all the things that we've been hearing and all these scares and the rumors and everything else, you know, I'm going to tell you something. There were students more responsible than adults. There was a student who tested, let's say, positive, wasn't even from here, but came around here. And the person who was near that person went to their employer first, before they even went home to their own parent and said, I'm going to have to quarantine. He didn't know. He just heard all these things that was happening and said, I'm going to have to quarantine for two weeks. I, I did this, this and this, and then went home to tell his parents. And then they did the tracing. And matter of fact, he wasn't, he hugged the girl and then that was it. And so he got really nervous, but he was really responsible because he heard. What was worse is the rumors that spread around, like it was a leper or something. The rumors that spread around like, oh, well, he was near this one. Next thing you know, we had, I'd say, 10 COVID, they were working, they were Labor Day weekend, they didn't shut down, go check this one. I had a call Karen and Karen asked her, she's right there. I must have texted her five times in like 10 minutes, did you check this restaurant? They didn't shut down this one, this one. He worked this one, this one. I called the restaurant, this, this and this and that. Why? Because we're afraid, and I think the adults are more afraid of, because you know what? We take it seriously. We know we have grandparents, parents, whatever, myself, diabetes, whatever. And we're afraid. But I think that we made these students more responsible because the fact is, they know of everything that's been going on in Gloucester, of what we've been teaching them, your students, yourselves, all of us here, what they're hearing, but also what they've also been hearing as what's happened to our lifeguards or what's happened to GPW, police, fire, everything else, all going around saying it, all people saying it. They, 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 they saw that. But when James said, I'm not going to start school because I can't do what you want me to do and I can't do that. And the kids supported him. Because, you know, the parents will say this and this, but it's the children. They're not children anymore. They're young adults. And sometimes we all forget that. And right now, you can say, okay, it's school, but Friday, we don't know where they're going to go. They're going to say, I'm going to go over Sepatia's house. You know what? Well, guess what? I live in the woods. They could be at my house. We live back in the woods. You know what? We have to trust. And, and that's what Brian said. And I'm going to vote yes because all my concerns, all the budget, everything else was done. Karen's on here. Brian said, yes, I am watching the both of you. And yes, I can fire you. So yes, I guess that helps a lot. No, Joel, I'm only kidding. But the fact is, you know what? Even Joel said it. Joel's asking city council, can we do some meetings? I want to see some of my projects, but there's a butters. Yet, you know what? He wants small cohorts to go look and be responsible, wearing your mask, to go look at a project so we can continue to, continue to operational skills that we do in our city, to continue to operate our city. And this is very important, especially when they're seniors. I never even thought, this is their last year. This is, let's not take it away from them. Let's give them the faith. Let's give them the trust. And then if they do something, oh, I don't worry about it. I'll take it away because I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha?
Thanks, Jonathan. So I'll also be supporting this. I, I really want to thank Brian and Karen for coming on and answering all of our questions. I think with any school sponsored event or activity, this is our job, is to ask these questions, especially during this time. And I really, I definitely was not ready to vote last week. And I appreciate you providing more information this time because it, it really helps to make our decision easier and trust your judgment as professionals. So thank you for taking that time. And I hope that we can continue answering questions or asking questions and getting some good feedback about how the sports teams are doing.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for all of the due diligence that they've done in trying to come to an understanding of every aspect of this issue. And I'd like to thank Karen and Brian and James and then for the work they did to do this presentation this evening and so that, so that we could get all of the questions answered. And I'd like to thank the school committee for, for being so diligent. And I think we're at a good point now where we can take the vote. And I think the, you know, I drive around the city and these kids are out doing, you know, James hit it right on the head. You know, this is, this is better, is better for them to be in this organized sport with, with some adult supervision than hanging around the basketball court and shooting hoops and playing a little, you know, playing games. And, and with this, oh, you know, I see him doing it. So this has got to be better. And kids need to be outside. These are all outside. And believe me, there's crowds on the boulevard and they're, they're walking by each other. And it's, you know, you don't, you know, some of these sports are, you do come in close contact, but not for that long. So I am very much in favor of sports and getting the kids out there next Monday. So Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favada?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
May it taken.
Yes, and we're all. Yes, and we're all watching you kids because I know you're going to, we're going to come by and watch. We won't go on the field, but we're watching our cars, believe me. Good luck.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
It passes nine zero. Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting. And I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Back in.